Welcome everyone to the October 16th, 2023 regular meeting of the Board of Education of the Beacon City School District. Please stand for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Vicki?
Here.
Excused.
Here.
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 Delayed possibly, excuse me, she's doing the NISBA resolution. Here, thank you. Matt, can you review the fair exits, please?
Exits are in the back of the LGI.
We're going to begin with open to the public. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to make a public comment?
Good evening, Brian Saltish, BEAA president, and Tom O'Neill, the BEAA vice president. We just want to thank you for all the time and effort you put into the school district. So on the behalf of our unit, we'd like to give you a little something. And what we'll do is we'll leave this with our newest members for them to help share with the board. But thank you so much for all the time that everybody puts in. We really appreciate everything you do.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
And it looks like there's some letters and stuff, we'll pass those out later from students.
Oh, thank you so much. Thank you. Love your tie, Brian. Okay, moving on to the workshop, we are going to hear from our Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum and Student Support, Segreario Jacinto O'Neill, about our academic data.
Good evening, everyone. So today I'm here to share, the data that I'm going to share today is the New York State Assessment data. So there, this is again, just one data point that we look at as a school district. We don't have all students that participate in the New York State assessment, so we have other assessments that we actually use. This year, all the data that you're going to see tonight from three through eight is based on our new standards, the next generation standards. So New York State, oh.
Sorry to interrupt, because our student advisors might have questions during the presentation.
Oh, yes.
I didn't even think that.
Oh, yeah, I didn't think of that.
I just want to introduce them really quickly.
Yes.
So tonight, we have three of our four student advisors to the board joining us. I apologize about forgetting to introduce you all. So coming back for a second year, Harsh Gupta, so thank you, Harsh. And we have Rachel Thorne over here, and she's joining us for her first year advising us. Sarah Lynn Jafar over here, thank you for joining us. And Alejandra Calderon is our fourth, and she's either running late or will make the next one. And just wanted to introduce because they're, they're ready to dig in, and we met on Friday to talk about the year, and we're excited to have you. So thank you for being here.
Yeah, thank you very much.
And sorry for, I totally spaced that out.
Welcome, and kidding me, the students are the ones that give me the hardest questions.
And I have one question.
Ready!
Do you go by Sarah or Sarah Lynn?
Either one's fine.
Okay. All right, thanks, sorry, continue.
No, please, you're welcome. No, no worries. So the three through eight data is based on the next generation standards. So New York State is no longer doing Common Core, we have phased out of it. And then the graduation data, the Regents exams, the data that I would be sharing with you tonight is actually our June data. So Mr. Dwyer will be doing something a little bit more recent, so the numbers are a little, maybe a little off for our graduation data, but it's more or less in line. So I wanted to share just what our participation was this year, last school year, for the New York State assessments. So if you can see, third grade, we have close to the 95 participation that under the Every Student Succeed Act, the 95 participation rate that we were required to have, we almost were able to have it in third grade. And as you can see, as the students go up in grade level, there is less and less participation. So those are students who parents have signed letters saying that they were refusing to take any of the state assessments. So this year, participating in English Language Arts, we had 1,148 students that qualified to take the state assessment. We had 811 students who actually participated. And this screen basically shows you the raw number of students that got in the different levels. So the yellow represents students that are, did not meet the grade level expectations set by the state of New York. Level two are students who are approaching the New York State levels of proficiency. And then levels three are students that met the levels of proficiency. And level four are students that exceeded the levels of proficiency. So again, these are not percentages, these are the actual raw numbers of students who scored in each particular level respectively. And these are the percentages. So if you see our grade three students, which were our first time testers, so the majority of our students who took this exam, they're not, this is their first time they're participating in state assessments. Something to keep in mind, these are also the students that did not have real kindergarten. So they were the first time taking the assessments after COVID, they did not have real kindergarten. So I think they did pretty well considering all the challenges that they had. And as we see in the different levels, we have 41% of our grade four students met or exceeded proficiency, 35, about 36% in grade five, 41 in grade six, 40 in grade seven, and 53% in grade eight. Again, keeping in mind that grade eight, we had about 52% of our eighth graders participate. So of the 52%, 53 scored at or above grade level expectations. And this is just a comparison from last year, even though it's not an apples to apples comparison. In 2022 was our first full year of in-person instruction. It was also based on the Common Core standards. In 2023, this is the baseline that the state has set for us. So this is the first time that we've assessed using these new standards. So we're using the assessments and the scores the students got this year, against, again, just one data point, as a baseline. So now, if you compare, we did in ELA, in certain grade levels, did improve. So we saw an uptick in our, again, our, our students who tested for the first time in grade three. These students are now represented here in fourth grade, and if you notice, they did improve in proficiency level. And then we saw a little, a bit of a decline in ELA in grade five, as well as grade six. You will see there's a little bit of a dip, with the exception of grade eight. In math, again, we had more or less around the same level of participation in our New York State math assessments. One thing to consider with our eighth graders, students in the eighth grade that were taking the Algebra I Regents did not participate in the New York State math assessment. Most of them do refuse, so, which is why you see a low participation rate in eighth grade. So these numbers represent the students that did not take Algebra Regents. And then again, we had less participation in our math assessments. ELA, we had 811, math, we had 757. Full disclosure, I wish my mom could have refused the math test when I was a kid, but... So again, if we look at the raw scores, we have students, again, at different levels. And then we look at the percentage wise. Again, our third graders, first time testers, they scored higher in math than they did in ELA. If you go down the line and compare it to some of our ELA scores, we did do better in math. If you recall, last year, when I shared our data, I had concerns about math. But it was concerns that was shared with all of my counterparts across the United States. The data that was, that was being exhibited by our students showed that there was a dip in math across the country. If you notice, this year, we are saving, seeing some improvement. So we're seeing that our students are starting to catch up. We did here in Beacon, try to really focus on our instructional practices in math to try to help our students really with that conceptual knowledge, moving away from that arithmetic, looking more at concepts. Our K-2 students now are getting extra support through iReady Math that the teachers are being trained in right now. And if you compare the data from the previous year, again, Common Core, you will see the trend is that we improved in math across all grade levels. Even with the amount of refusals in eighth grade math. In high school. Okay. So our June Regents exams, well, the majority of our 82.2%, 88.2% of our students did well on our New York State Regents exam. So what they do for some of the Regents exams, they had, they break it up into five levels. Anything above a level three is considered proficient. So the majority of our students scored above a level three. In global, we had 85.4% of our students score above a level three. In US history, if you recall, the, the year before, the US history Regents was canceled because of a sensitive question. So this was the first time that this Regents exam was administered, and about 91% of our students scored at level three and above. Our living, living environment Regents, about 75% of our students scored proficient. Chemistry, 58%. Or of science, 67%. And physics, 85.7%. Our math Regents, Algebra I, 67 points, 65.7%. Algebra II, 65%. And geometry was 59%. Again, this is the June data for our graduation rate. So according, again, the, the data is a little higher now. We haven't, this data does not include our students that finished in August, as well as took Regents exams in August. So this is all June data. So in June, we were at 84%. We actually decreased our number of dropouts from the previous year, so we have more completers this year. And as you can see, in comparison to the region, as well as BOCs, we are actually above their rate. And we continue to increase. So again, this was 2021, there was a little dip last year, and then we're progressing. Yeah?
Do the Regents exam percentages that you're stating, do they include the special appeal for the 50 to 64, or do they not include that?
They don't include, not the June ones.
Not the June ones?
The August doesn't include that.
So that's not included in here?
So I, I don't have it on a slide, but there were a couple of trends that we identified this year, looking at not just our New York State data, but also looking at iReady, our Fuentes and Pennell assessments, all the different assessments that we have in the district. So one of the things when we look at ELA, in our elementary level, we are pivoting away from any of the teacher's college model of instruction that was being done before. We're really focusing on best practices, scientifically proven research, in terms of interventions for our students. So we do have tutoluses that are working with our classroom teachers on helping them support students within the classroom. I know you're hearing this terminology about the science of reading. The science of reading is not new. This is, research has been around for 60 years. This is about teaching explicit reading instruction. One of the things that the data has, has illustrated is that our students need support in vocabulary. Our students in the younger grades are getting, right now, we do implement foundations, so we are doing the six different points of reading instruction that our students are supposed to have according to best practices in K-2, which is phonological awareness, phonemic awareness, phonics, vocabulary fluency, and sight words. So we are getting that covered in K-2. We are going to be supporting teachers in three, four, and five this year on actually teaching phonics to our upper grade students. And the reason for that is those students missed a lot of instruction, so they had gaps during COVID, and they didn't really master those foundational skills that they would have mastered in K-2. So because of that, we want to still catch them before they get to the secondary level. As we know, K to two is the time that students learn to read, three and above is where you read to learn. So if our students are still struggling with code in the upper grades, what it does is that it limits them from getting information, particularly in the content areas. So we are going to be doing something a little bit different, and because our data is showing that our students in grades three, four, and five do need more phonics support, hopefully that's not something that we're going to always have to do, except for some students who are always going to need some specialized support, but we're going to be doing that this year. In addition, one of the things that we also noticed within ELA was that if you looked at the assessment, every question on the assessment, we're able to actually look at and see how every student actually scored and answered that question. A trend that we were seeing was that a lot of our students did well on multiple choice. When it was literature, when it was literal questions, they need more support in inferential questioning. So those why questioning, author's purpose, identifying theme. The other thing that we noticed is that there were times where they were able to answer a multiple choice question that was aligned to a standard correctly, but when that same standard was then tested on a short response, they were not getting full credit. So we were noticing that they would ask a question such as, go back to paragraph two and three, identify what the theme is, and give two, two details to support that. So a lot of the students were able to identify it, but they were not given the supporting detail. Therefore, questions that were worth three, four points, our students were only getting one to two points. So that's something that we're going to be supporting our students when it comes to writing, making sure that those constructive responses, that they're able to answer them fully, just because that's just good practice. It's not just for an exam, but our students need to be able to write efficiently, as we know in terms of college and career ready, being able to, to write something out fully, explicitly, following the directions, is really, really important. So we're going to be doing a lot more small group instruction to support that. We saw the same trend in math, where our students are doing better, however, when it came time, when the information was presented in a different way, that was not a multiple choice, we were noticing that they would get it wrong when it came to problem solving. So when they got a word problem that was testing the same concept, there were, some of our students have struggled. So we're going to be exposing them to more problem solving strategies to help support our students. So identifying the trends kind of helps us to plan. The other thing that we also identified was the fact that, for example, our sixth grade ELA test, 60% of the questions were based on informational texts. And it is clear that our students need more support in informational texts. So really trying to see if we can look at social studies, and we can integrate more literature in social studies, it lends itself really nicely. And this year, we are going to be mapping social studies units, so that's really exciting. So there's going to be a good opportunity to look at our units of study, making sure that we're following the New York State framework that was put out in 2017, but at the same time, making sure that we're exposing our students to more rich literature, which is also going to help us to develop their vocabulary. Yes?
So I know from K through five, there were programs such as Reading Plus and like Raz Kids, that kids really used to increase their vocabulary literacy and comprehension rates. But will there be programs in the middle school now implemented to, you know, like higher level programs to further develop that, you know, comprehension and literacy rate, as you're talking about?
Yep, because part of it's going to be done through the social studies unit curriculum mapping. So that's one of the things that we want to do. The ELA teachers at the, at the middle school have done a lot of curriculum mapping already, trying to integrate more informational texts, but there needs to be more exposure, because at the middle school, it's only that 45-minute block, some of the students are getting AIS. There needs to be more exposure to informational texts. And social studies, again, is a great subject where you can do that, particularly exposing kids to primary documents, looking at journals, memoirs, biographies, you know, so I, and not to mention, I think it would also make it a little bit more interesting. Personally, I think social studies is like gossip, you know, so if you get a good book to, to integrate into it, it makes it a little bit more appealing.
I think the often effective part of the programs, like Reading Plus or something like that, is that teachers assign them as homework that were like every day, and it kind of became a daily routine to read paragraphs and answer questions. When you come to middle school, there's like a break in like answering questions based off passages, because like, I've honestly noticed that as soon as you come to high school, the next time you're genuinely answering questions based off paragraphs is the SAT. So it really does not come down to it anymore. So I think if there's like, if you, if there has to be a genuine increasing, like improvement, I guess, in, I guess, multiple choice question rates, you have to just do them more in general. So I think programs like Reading Plus, that's just a base example, kind of help with that.
Which, what about, I know the middle school kids are using iReady.
Yeah, but that's testing.
Yeah.
Well, it's, it has a, three times your assessment, but it also has like a...
Has lessons in there.
A daily component.
Yeah. So there, what iReady does is when the student takes the assessment, it's actually adaptive. So then, at the score that they get at the end is based on how they scored on the different domains. So if a student, let's say informational text is something that they, they need supported, it will actually indicate that, and then there's all these different lessons that the students can do to support them. The other thing that iReady has, it has a test prep in there that we do during the rise program, the after-school program. So there's booklets in there that teachers can actually take like mock tests with the students to get them prepared for it. One of the other things that I'm also suggesting to the teachers is that New York State, what they do is that they release 75% of the questions that turned up on the state assessment. And I don't believe in teaching to the test, because we should not be doing that, but we should be giving kids opportunities to see what they're going to be asked. Because one of the things that I noticed is, a lot of times, it's not that the students don't know the content, it's that they don't know what they're being asked, because of the way the question is being written and formulated. So if our students have exposure and practice with that, that is a very easy do now, taking one of those released questions, putting it up as a do now, student has all day to, to do it, it could be put on a Google Classroom, or that can be done for homework, or something where it's not taking class time, because I don't want class time being taken up with test prep. You know, again, I don't think that's the most effective way to support our students. If we're doing right by our students, the test will be easy. But it's, it's the way that they, they formulate those questions, and that's not something that teachers can do every day themselves, because the people who come up with these testing questions, they're pros. Like this is what they do for a living, you know, we don't kind of do that for a living, you know, so. So we're hoping that we're all these different ways that we're trying to kind of use the data to guide our instruction, that things will be, will be able to identify students that need more support, see some movement between the different levels. Some of the things that we've already done, it was nice to see some upticks in some of the grade levels, so hopefully we'll keep the momentum. And everyone's working really, really hard, so.
And you're doing training, like you're training the, the teachers, like helping the teachers better teach the class in a method, right?
Yeah, professional development, yeah.
And following up with them to make sure like it's still, like they, do they still feel comfortable, do they, like do they feel a need to edit anything or change from a different?
No, no, we're constantly, trust me, they, they have my email. So if they're still like, actually, one of the things that we're doing right now, so in terms of tier one, and what I mean by tier one interventions, is that when it's in a classroom, is these are the things, the good practices that we're doing with all students, right? So, and that means taking small groups of students aside and working with them, and using actually a strategy that we know is proven to work. So that's why I mean by a tier one intervention. So right now, we are actually doing professional learning. We're starting at the elementary level with the two Tolsas that we have, and we're actually doing two and a half hour sessions by grade level, working with teachers on those interventions. I'm like, this is what it looks like. And this is also how you progress monitor, because the other thing is that a lot of our teaching programs, trying to be diplomatic, so there was a time where a lot of teaching programs focused on a lot of theory, and some of those things on how do you track if a strategy is working for a student was not always covered. So we're doing now, we're trying to teach that, trying to kind of plug the holes where a lot of the teaching programs were not able to do. That has changed throughout time, like if you look right now, for example, Manhattanville, Manhattanville has a Rose Institute, and it's based on literacy, where the teachers who are going to exit that program are actually going to be taught how to teach reading, no matter what license you, you leave with, you know, and that's not something that was done in the past. So, because again, there was this theory that kids just kind of picked up words and language, and that was not based on research, so.
Have the teachers given time to review the data for each of their grade levels to see what they see as trends and what they see as strengths and weaknesses?
That the principals are facilitating those meetings. Every teacher has a bar, a count, and it's not a bar to drink. So a bar count is actually, our, our Rick actually gives us this, it's like a software, and you can actually go in. So I, as a district administrator, I can go in, and I can look up every child in the district, and I can literally see exactly how they did on the test, and it gives me about 10 different kinds of reports. I share the information with the principals at a principal's meeting, and kind of model for them how to use the reports to then use it with their teachers. And what those reports do, there's reports that talks, literally shows trends, so that you could see in a, in a, in a whole bar how your students did. It actually also does a resort. So if you're a classroom teacher, I can go in and I can see the students that I had last year, and see how they did, and I can resort it and see the current students that are sitting in front of me, and see how they did.
Are they doing anything where it's teacher-led and it's not administrator-led, where they're doing a dive of the data?
Well, teachers need to be taught how to do that. It's not that ea, it's not that easy just to lead data, it has to be, we have to do a lot of PD around that. So we're still doing PD on having teachers understand how to read their data. Where they're pretty proficient is, is in iReady. iReady, the last two years, they worked really hard on, there's actually a whole PD that they did on getting the most out of your data, where the teachers were taught, this is what your data means. This is the implication of your data, and this is how you can support your students, and the lessons that went along with that. But looking at New York State data takes some training, because it's also about aligning to the standards, it's also about comparing it to other districts, it's also comparing about regionally. So it's, so the different reports have to be taught to each of the teachers.
But you don't think that they know the standards that they're teaching and how to align the questions?
It doesn't, it's not that easy to read data for someone that does it.
This is based on, yeah.
Yeah, because you can know how, you can know how to do your job and teach, and then read some maybe simplistic data, but the data that, you have five different data points that you can pull that align with however many different strategies out of the, the new standards. You, you really need to want to kind of, you can look at and understand it, but to have someone professionally show you, like, okay, now you see it, but talk to, talk through, like, how should you teach your class now? Like, what are you actually gaining from this? To have that, that, that back and forth with someone, then I think to just, you give me data and I'm just looking at it, it's, I still need someone, I feel like, I get what you're saying, like I think that they're educated enough to read the data, but there's still a level of, right, you're never too old to learn. Like there's a level of having someone show you exactly how to read the data, but then that teacher that then process what you're saying, and then say, okay, how can I take that, and how does it work with this level of students that we have in front of me? And that's where their knowledge comes in, because they know the type of students that come into their classroom, they know who they're working with, but...
And when you look at the different reports, they're not easy reports to read, they're busy. You know, because I know when I was the building principal, we were meeting September, and I would lead these data discussions, and it took at least a good three to four years for my teachers, and I explicitly was doing it constantly to kind of get a hang of it, because they were like, wait, what does this mean? And we would go over it and over it and over it until they were, like, at no point, me doing it the first year, could I have had them lead the discussion on their own. They could do Fuentes and Pennell data, that would, that they know how to do. They could, we were doing iReady in my previous district, that they knew how to do. But the state, the state data is very busy data, there's a lot of comparisons to similar districts, to statewide, to the region, and being able to know what all this stuff means has to be taught.
And are you bringing, considering that this is only a portion of our student body, are you like cross-referencing it with assessments that we're doing where everyone is tested? And is it tracking with, in general?
Yeah, it's actually, there's a lot of alignment between our, our data from iReady and the state data. So there's almost point by point alignment. So the same trends that I was talking about, vocabulary and informational text, that's the same kind of information that we're getting on iReady as well. The teachers right now, also part of the curriculum mapping, is that we're developing common assessments that are aligned to the new standards. And the reason that we're doing that is because we want to make sure that when the teachers are assessing students in their classroom for report card grading, that it's number one, actually aligned to the standards, that we're assessing for the standards and not just skills. And we get caught a lot of time in assessing, and we do have to assess skills to make sure there's understanding and proficiency then for the standard, but a lot of times we get stuck on skill, because again, that's something that also has to be taught. That way, when a teacher in Glenham gives a kid a three, it's not based on something different than someone, a third grade teacher in South, than a third grade teacher in Sargent. We want to make sure there's cohesion. That's why part of the common assessment is creating rubrics, common rubrics that everyone's using to ensure that we are number one, hitting all the targets that we're supposed to be hitting, but also identifying the students that we need to identify for more support. And it has to be a common language, because if my lens is different than, than Anthony's lens, then, because we're setting different curves... different curves of proficiency, then we're not helping students effectively. So there has to be a standard that we're all using.
Can I just, um, ask, you, you, there's a lot of things here that teachers are being asked to do, um, with the creation of common assessments, which is difficult. You had talked about middle school adding, um, which I think is great, informational texts into social studies, it's awesome. I'm just wondering, where do they find, where's the ti- time found for them to do this work?
It's going to be after school. It's going to be a posting, it's after school. The teachers who are doing this work are getting paid.
So.
During the day.
So.
It's a committee of teachers.
Right, so then it's, it's those that want to sign up for it, not all?
Not all, but it's shared with all. And the expectation is that all will do it. And I would tell you, we've had, we have about forty teachers last year that did curriculum mapping, you know? And I was asked to put out a posting for social studies. So we do have a good group of K-12 teachers that want to start doing this work in social studies. And it's time to do it because, again, when we think about the teaching of history, we need to make sure that we are following the inquiry model as per the state, but also we need to make sure that we're teaching inclusive history, you know, so. And we have to assess it as well, so.
Any other questions? Thank you so much.
All right, thank you.
Um, the next section of our agenda is an opportunity for you as student, uh, school board representatives to make a comment if you want to. There is no pressure on that, but I will ask you every meeting. So if you have anything that you wanted to say tonight, you're welcome to, or if you want to just say hi.
Or if you just want to introduce yourself.
Hi, uh, my name's Harsh Gupta. I'm a senior this year in, um, at Beacon High School. Um, yeah, uh, excited to be here and, um, yeah.
All right, follow that. Um, I'm also a senior at Beacon High School. Um, and yeah, I'm excited to do it this year. I was going to do it last year, but time constraints, I couldn't do it. So I'm excited to be able to be, be here this year. Pass it to Sarah.
Um, I'm Sarah, I'm a junior, um, this year, and I'm excited to be on this side of the room, this year, and yeah.
Well, we're really glad to have you, thank you so much. And, and your opinion means a lot to us, so we look forward to hearing from you. Uh, reviewing the agenda, there are a couple additions. Um, thirteen-ten, appoint, um, appoint, appointment of district social media coordinator for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. Thirteen-eleven, appoint strategic plan pillar team members for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. Thirteen-twelve, appoint strategic plan pillar team facilitators for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. And fourteen-oh-five, appoint substitute director of security. Uh, can I have a motion to adjourn to executive session to review the employment history of a particular individual? And the board will return in about thirty minutes. Second by Eunice, comments or questions? All in favor? Passes, what do we, six? Six to zero.
All right, just a, a couple of quick updates. Uh, first, I just want to say, uh, homecoming week was now a couple of weeks ago, and it just really was a great week, uh, in terms of, uh, the events being well-attended, uh, all the way through until the dance, which I think may be at least in my time here, a record number of students, uh, at the high school went to a dance, which is awesome. So, uh, it was just great to see, um, different generations, um, at all the different activities and the students really enjoying themselves, uh, and it, it was just great. So just want to give a shout out to all the folks that made that week happen, uh, because a lot of effort went into it. Um, a couple of updates, just, um, one for a district update and one a board update. We've put a schedule together for school presentations. Um, and so they'll start on November sixth at the next board meeting, three weeks from now. Uh, we're going to have, uh, Ron Bowden and Forrest still present, these will be the principals presenting. December eleventh, we're going to have, uh, Corey from the high school and Katie from Sargent. And then January eighth, I think is the first board meeting in January, that will be Cassandra, Glenham, and Kelly Amidola, South Avenue. So, uh, just in terms of connecting to, um, the academic data presentation earlier today, data will be a part of their presentation as well. They'll drill down a little bit more into their school data, along with sharing initiatives that's happening, work that connects to the strategic plan, et cetera. So, um, so that will start at the next board meeting. And, and then lastly, the strategic plan work continues on October thirtieth. Uh, we have, um, teachers and some administrators we're appointing tonight. Uh, the whole group is going to be together on October thirtieth with our outside facilitators, and then the pillar teams will be meeting every month as we go through the year, kind of working on the plan, um, et cetera. So that keeps moving on too. And we'll be able to update on how that day went, uh, at the next board meeting. That's all I have.
Is that strategic planning meeting?
What's that?
What time is that strategic planning meeting?
It's an all-day thing, so it's like nine to three.
Okay.
Yep.
Good to know. Um, great, thanks. Semra, work, any comments, more comments?
No comments, no.
Thank you. Uh, Eunice?
Yes, thank you. Um, I just wanted to let everyone know that the, um, district wellness committee is having its first meeting of the school year on October twenty-sixth at four o'clock. Um, thank you Heather for sending that. Um, I did want to ask Matt about the policy. I know there's been discussion about having a meeting in October. Is that happening, October twenty-third, which is already Monday?
We currently have one scheduled for November thirteenth. We had talked about, um, keeping what was originally scheduled for the twenty-third because we have several policies to talk about, but I didn't know if you guys were ready for that or?
Um, I can answer tomorrow.
Okay.
Um, I think we may have some, but I just need to tie to.
Sounds good, I mean, then we may have a meeting sometime in October.
Okay.
Is it next?
It would be next Monday.
That's what's on the, yeah, the twenty-third.
Okay.
We might be trying to do audit that night?
Well, that's, okay, that's on my, my question list, so.
I haven't gotten a final commitment, um, on the twenty-third yet, but, uh, the auditors are available the twenty-third, and she's available the twenty-sixth that week, so I'm really trying to get her to settle on a date.
Okay.
I was going to ask what everyone's.
That works for me, wait, who, audit?
Yeah.
And, and.
Either the twenty-third or the twenty-sixth, is that what you're saying?
The twenty-sixth is the, um, foundation gala, the.
Yeah, I'm, I could do either one.
Okay. Um, I guess I would prefer the twenty-third.
Okay.
And we could still do policy, we could do them both if we were doing that, so.
Well, let me know and then I will send something out.
Okay, great.
Thank you. And, uh, last thing I just want to say is thank you to the foundation for Beacon Schools for their donation. That's it.
Thank you. Um, Alina?
Um, I just want to thank Saggy on the presentation. It's nice always hear about this, the data, the statistics of where our students are from year to year and grade to grade and kind of just looking at it. And it was nice to hear that there is an uptick, whatever that is, whatever percentage it is, it's still a positive thing. And it's nice that you are, or we as a district is, um, training our teachers and preparing them and, and not expecting them to just know how to do certain things. So it's nice to hear that, all the professional development that goes into it. And I'm, I'm happy to see the students back in our meeting too as well. Um, it's nice to hear their perspective and what questions that they ask on the different times that they ask. It's good to hear what they're thinking. Um, and just to listen to them sometimes to say, you know, they're very intelligent young individuals with the questions that they ask, so it's nice to have them back on the board. That's it.
Thank you. Eric?
I totally agree. I'm, I'm very pleased that the students are here. I watched some of the meetings last year not being here. They do offer excellent insight and things that we don't know, so it's awesome. And I'd also like to say, uh, that was a very good report tonight. I know the data was embargoed up to just, I think, a couple of weeks ago, so this was, you know, came very quickly, so I do appreciate that too. Um, and, uh, yeah, it's just, as we all know, it's a lot of work to do, but, uh, thanks for the presentation, I thought it was excellent. Thank you.
Thank you. Anthony?
Sure have the same sentiments about the presentation and no other comments.
Thank you. Um, so I just want to confirm, Amra, you're going to let us know about audit, um, including our volunteers to the committee?
Yes.
Hopefully tomorrow, so.
Yes, as soon as I can get it.
Okay. Um, we also have a facilities meeting on the calendar for the thirtieth, is that on?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Is that seven o'clock?
That is for sure on.
Okay.
Seven? Okay, good, great.
Um, okay, super. And then, um, I just wanted to bring to your attention, board members, two things I sent you, um, late this afternoon. Uh, one was a letter from our law firm that he had put together about, um, information about what it means to reduce the side of, size of the board, what the, what that would actually look like over the next four or five years. I'm going to leave it to, if any board member would like to have it put on the agenda for discussion, please let me know. Otherwise, you can just sit with the information. The other is, um, the kind of extensive rubric for the condom availability program. Uh, one of the things on that, the first thing on that actually is board approval. And I think that that would probably be through policy, but I didn't want to send it to the policy committee without, um, the consent of the board. Uh, so I guess I, um, I guess I'm asking if I should put it on the agenda for new business, or is everyone just like, yeah, go ahead and move to the policy committee?
I have questions about it. I mean, like, I don't, I'm, I have reservations about, like, what would the process be? Um, what's the liability of the district for it and stuff? So I want that information to just before moving forward with it.
Okay, well, why don't I, um, I mean, if you wouldn't mind emailing your questions so we can make sure we have the answers to them, and then we can put it on the agenda for discussion, um, once we have those answers and we can move forward from there?
Sure.
Sound good? Okay, great.
Meredith, can I just ask?
Yeah.
So I looked at the, the, um, thing that you'd sent, the, the rubric.
Mm-hmm.
So if we approve it as the board, then there, you know, there's a lot of things that need to get done, you know? Opt-out letters and thing parents can, you know, not, you know, yes-in, yes-out, or no-out. How does that, so what does our approval actually do? Does that, does that then start the high school doing things with the rubric? Or like, I, that's what I didn't understand.
Right, well, since it was the first thing on, I, I did think it sort of jumpstarts the process. It, it still needs to be approved by the New York State Education Department, so, um, it doesn't start the program from happening. It, it more to me seemed like the first step toward any progress in making the program happen.
You mean, uh, uh, at the state level or in Beacon?
At, at the Beacon level. So whatever we do, we have to, you know, there's curriculum, um, requirements.
Saw that.
We have to collect all of that and present it as a package to the, um, state ed department and get approval from them to have the, to house the program here.
Do we know of any, um, are there, are districts do, doing this already around us? Do we know if anybody is doing?
Actually, there's an article in the Highlands Current.
Oh.
Um, it didn't get into specifics about like Duchess County, but it did say like percentages of high schools that are doing this, um.
Do you know?
So I've called the nurses association today about this to find out like, what is the policy that needs to be adopted, who has to be on the committee, what is the approval process like, what are the opt-out? Do you have to involve, you know, the clergy and the community? All those things are yes. Um, Rochester City School District is doing it, has been doing it since about two thousand eleven, so has Buffalo. Um, they do have board policy, so I contacted both those school districts too. Um, the actual health department, that, uh, the nurses, uh, union or the people who help you through this is located in Rochester, I spoke with them today. So it's a big rubric, it is very intensive.
Yeah.
I did meet with, um, on a recommendation from Mr. Dwyer. I did meet with one of the health, uh, teachers today as well to go through it. Um, there's a webinar online that is very helpful, but, um, what the first step is that it is being considered by the board to move forward with a policy, and I do have sample policies.
Okay, great.
So the passage of a policy doesn't actually mean we start doing it?
No, we still need the state approval, right.
Um, yeah, I, I sort of have been, I don't want to say jokingly, but, um, you may be noticing a trend that, because New York City does it too, that it's these very large districts do it because they probably have, like, a team of people that can do all those things on the rubric in, in short notice. And it's, it almost feels like it's biased against small districts or something with all the things they're asking us to do. But that said, uh, I think it would start with the board, but it doesn't mean board passage of a policy is very far away from us actually doing it. Because it, it needs to be state-approved, um, which I think would be several months to go through all those steps.
Oh, I agree, yeah.
So the board would, in a sense, vote on us creating this policy that the policy says that we're, what we're going to attempt to do?
No, the policy, the policy would be written as if we were doing it. So we're, we would then create this package that would go to the state that would be like, if we were going to do this program, this is what it would look like. And then there, they would tell us, um, great, or here are some weaknesses in what you're doing, and it actually says within that here, like, they have to help us write it a little bit better if, if that's the, but.
The policy I'm sure would say, this is contingent on state approval.
Yeah.
Right. So, you know, like, if the board passes it, it.
Yeah.
You have to go through all those other.
I mean, do you have the, um, links to the policies from those? Do you mind sharing those with the board? That'd be great. So I'll put it on, I'm not asking for anybody to give approval or not tonight, I'll, uh, once we compile. If you have other questions, please email them to me, I'll try to get the answers and we'll put it on a future agenda.
Yeah, my, my only concern is, is when look, the extensive rubric, I, my, my worry is who it, uh, falls upon.
Who does this?
In the district.
Yeah.
I mean, you know, it's probably going to be Heather, but, but, you know? You know, uh, because that, that's, it always, it always falls on the PPS, I know that, but it's, it, that's a, it looks pretty difficult to, to do. Not that I'm against it or for it, I'm just saying the work to get there looks extensive.
Yeah, and I think it's important to acknowledge that, I, you know, these things don't come out of thin air.
Right.
And, um, but I, I feel like as board members, it's our job to consider all those things.
Sure.
And, you know, make a, make an informed decision about it. Okay.
Meredith, can I say one more thing?
Of course.
I forgot to mention the most important part of my superintendent, uh, comment or report tonight is just to acknowledge that it's, uh, board recognition night tonight.
Oh, I forgot too.
Uh, so I had it all written out and then I decided I'm going to go no notes tonight, and I forgot the most important thing. So, uh, we have some beacon gear for you to add to your beacon collection and, uh, um, you know, I enjoy wearing this stuff so much that, uh, sometimes my wife will say, could sit, could tonight be a non-beacon wear night? Do something out? Uh, so anyway, I hope you wear it. If something is wrong with the size, we can figure it out, so just let us know that. But, uh, but just want to say a huge thank you, um, for everything you do. And it is a lot of time away from your families to help us, uh, run the district. What you do is just absolutely essential. And, and thank you, huge thank you. So, keep coming back. Thank you.
Sure, thank you. And I also want to thank everyone for the recognition. And also thank my fellow board members for being on the team. It's, it's great to be working with all of you. So, moving on to the consent agenda. The use of the consent agenda permits the Board of Education to make more effective use of its time by adopting a single motion to cover those relatively routine matters which are included. Any member of the board who wishes to discuss individually a particular piece of business on the consent agenda may so indicate and that item will be considered and voted on separately, thus preserving the right of all board members to be heard on any issue. Are there any items that any board members would like to have removed from the consent agenda? Okay, can I have a motion to approve twelve-point-oh-one through sixteen-point-oh-five? Eunice, is there a second? Semra, are there any comments or questions? Just gratitude for the donation from the foundation. It's for, for the DCC students, yeah. And I'm not sure, I don't know exactly how that's working actually. Is that, is it a scholarship program or is it a general, like, fund?
It is, yeah, it's basically a scholarship program, so we have it. And we are, through the guidance counselors and Mr. Dwyer, we're identifying students who need it and we're then directly paying their tuition. The one requirement we have is it needs to be a student who's already qualifying for the free and reduced lunch discount. That seems obviously just kind of makes sense. So, and a number of students have already identified as needing it, so. So it's, we're very lucky to have.
That's amazing, yeah. I want to donate to them tonight. I want to donate to the foundation tonight for that. That's such an amazing thing that they've stepped up so quickly to meet that need.
Yeah, and we figured out a way, we figured out a way with DCC, right? To just do it really cleanly. And so, we're not making students jump through a bunch of hoops. It's like they basically just need to talk to their guidance counselor or their principal. We also have really, you know, Mr. Dwyer's really worked with his team to like, also not just wait for a student to ask, like just kind of go to a student and say, do you need help with this? Or did you not do this class for a reason or those kinds of things? So, so anyway, yeah, we're very, very grateful for that donation.
Great, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I'm also in favor, passes six to zero. Can I have a motion to adjourn the meeting? Alina, is there a second? Eric, Eric with the second. Al in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I'm also in favor, passes six to zero.
You need to have one last vote on the chalk list.